And could you please stand for the pledge and then remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of this law of justice.
Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron.
Present.
Councilmember Sharnow.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Thank you. First item is reports by Mayor, councilmembers, and town manager. Grady?
I have no, no reports at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Hart, hold a mic. Okay, I'll go down in order.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I attended the breakfast the town hosted on February 6th for several of our Canadian residents and we had, what, about, gosh, 75 people there maybe? I'm not even sure, but nice talk from Glenn Williamson. He's CEO and founder of Canada-Arizona Business Council and had some presentations, well, from Joe Bill with the Dark Sky Group and from staff. So, thought it was a great breakfast and a great time to get together and kind of promote a new relationship hopefully between Fountain Hills and some of our Canadian residents and business people. And, you know, Councilman Tolles, myself, and the mayor were at the Fort McDowell inauguration last week. I was last Tuesday night over at Fort McDowell and three new councilmembers over there got sworn into office and it was quite the affair. So, it was good to be over there for that as well. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Hart, are you going to say anything about the inauguration?
Yeah, it was a very nice event and I think it's very important we continue to foster that relationship, strong relationship with Fort McDowell. And they are doing an amazing job of expanding that casino as we went on the tour and that'll be an economic driver for them, but also if we play our cards right for us as well.
Thank you. Anybody have anything to report? Well, you knew we had the Pony Express, so that was really fun, and the Concourse in the hills. I got to speak at a Rotary Lunch. Staff, we got to go on a tour. Realtor Denise Ricketts is on the board of the Southwest Wildlife Conservation Center, which is a sanctuary. They do really important, amazing work and a lot of exciting things going on and we really appreciate Denise inviting us. Oh, Senior Services, which is called Encore for More now, had a reception celebrating 30 years. There seems to be a lot of milestones this year, so they were celebrating 30 years. Loving the Hills, of course, was on Valentine's Day and there was a lot of coverage on TV and all kinds of places with that. We thank Sammy and Stephanie for that. Heritage Festival and I don't know if this counts as an activity of mine, but I watched people paint the bollards and I watched people paint the 50th signs. So, we had a lot of activity. There were just a ton of people in the park on these beautiful days that we're having. So, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the proclamation, which is declaring February 2020 as Women's Suffrage Month. And I know that we have Karen, where are you? There you are. And I'll come down, I'll read it to you and I'll present it to you if that's okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. If you want to come right up here. So, these women are from the American Association of University Women and I was a member for a very long time and it's just a wonderful group and serving Fountain Hills, Fountain Hills, Rio Verde, and Scottsdale. So, I'm going to get the, I'll read it to you first and then I'll go get it and we can get a picture taken. Whereas, we are commemorating the 100th anniversary of the adoption of the 19th Amendment as part of the United States Constitution, an amendment which gave women the right to vote. And whereas, as part of today's recognition, we not only commemorate the achievements of groundbreaking activists such as Alice Paul, Susan B. Anthony, and Ida Wells, among others, we honor the amazing accomplishments of women who have resided in Arizona. In Arizona, we've always been at the forefront of women's issues. Within one year of Arizona becoming a state in 1912, voters overwhelmingly approved an initiative to give women the right to vote, eight years before the United States took the step. We became only the 10th state to do so. Whereas, our town and state claim an abundance of female leaders and change makers. For instance, Arizona's had the most women governors of any state in the nation. Furthermore, the first female U.S. Supreme Court Justice Sandra Day O'Connor hails from Arizona. And whereas, in 1980, Governor Bruce Babbitt worked closely with the Arizona Women's Commission to create the Arizona Women's Hall of Fame, which has its permanent exhibit at Phoenix's Carnegie Center. And whereas, in Fountain Hills, women leaders have contributed to and strengthened our community and are working daily to empower others who seek to make effective and lasting change here. So, now therefore, I Jenny Dickey, Mayor of Fountain Hills, in accordance with the law, do hereby proclaim February 2020 as Women's Suffrage Month. Let me go get it and then we can take a picture. Thank you so much for coming. And I wanted to mention that we're asking all residents to please take the time and appreciate the progress our town, state, and country has made because of women. Thank you so much. Thank you. Karen was my neighbor for many, many years. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have presentation by Honorable Counsel Enrique Melendez, Executive Director of the Consular Corps of Arizona, the key to the city of Ataco and to the town of Fountain Hills. Enrique, please come up. We welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dickey, Vice Mayor LaCron, councilmembers, town manager, and staff. Tonight, I'm acting as the Executive Director of the Diplomatic Service in the State of Arizona. We now have 43 nations and it seems like each month, we get a new council, a new country, which has had Latvia come in. And so, we're growing. I'm also very proud to announce that we have had the service of three honorary councils in Fountain Hills. And we've received many acclaim throughout the country for being the smallest town or city municipality that has three councils. One of them that is here, my good friend, the Council of Poland, Mr. Bougemil Horsom. The other one is Council of the Netherlands, Sibavandercy couldn't be here, and then your servant at the podium. The, I'm here today to present two plaques, which are very, very important, I believe, to all of us and Sister City Group, to myself, and to the town of Fountain Hills. The first one, Mayor and councilmembers and town manager, is a plaque on behalf of the Mayor, Oscar Gomez, of the city of Ataco, and 17 members, 17 members of their city council. How would you like to work with them? The first one are the keys to the city, the mayor, which were given to me last month and while I was in El Salvador through the protocol process to present to you as mayor of our town. The second is a wonderful tribute to a former mayor, Mayor Sharon Morgan, for her dedication and love to the Sister Cities program throughout her years. A special effort took place in 2006 when we took 43 Fountain High School students to El Salvador, plus five chaperones, and built 20 houses out of the jungles. I believe that Councilman Sharnow has been there and visited that city and we welcome all of you to, one day, come down and visit El Salvador. The specialty about this plaque is very significant to me because it's written in Spanish and all of you, I've given the town clerk the English version, and I want to read it to you in English, if I may. Madam Sharon Morgan, former mayor of Fountain Hills, the mayor of the city and council of Ataco, we profoundly appreciate your unconditional support that we have received through your person, thanks to your highest quality of a human being. We thank God for the enormous opportunity that he gave us to know you, respect you, and love you. Your infinite virtues of service to our community, love to our people, and the great quality of a human heart will always be remembered in your sister city of Ataco. United in pain for our loss, we are solidified and united in hope and eternally grateful. Signed by Mayor Oscar Gomez. The last thing I want to say about El Salvador is that after 9/11, we were the only nation, the only nation in the Western Hemisphere to send troops to Iraq. As a matter of fact, I was there, my wife, who couldn't be here tonight, were there when the troops, we sent a battalion of special forces and sent them to Iraq while I was there. It was a great honor. So, we are very, very close to our country. I'm very proud to say that with all due respect. Now, would you be kind enough to come down now? One last thing. Before Senator John McCain went up to heaven, he and I became friends after 9/11. And he had been in El Salvador six times together with Senator Kyle. And I asked the senator, I said, "With all due respect, what did you like the best about El Salvador? Was it the lakes? Was it the ocean? Was it the rivers? Was it the volcanoes?" And he said, "Their hearts." So, with that, please come on down, town manager.
Mayor Dickey, on behalf of the 17 members of the city council of Ataco, I present you with the keys to the city of the Sister City of Ataco.
Thank you. Thank you for always being such a gracious ambassador and all of you to all these wonderful countries and sisters.
Thank you. And once again, on behalf of the mayor and 17 members of the city council of Ataco, I present to you the dedication, in Spanish, to be given to you on behalf of the mayor, for Sharon Morgan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have the call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards? We do the first one as Steve Messel. Thank you.
Mayor, councilpeople.
Aye.
I'll get it. You can't imagine my surprise when I opened up the Fountain Hills Times online yesterday and found out we're going to widen Shea. Going to widen Shea. How many millions is that going to cost? What's the problem? What's the problem with Shea now? Why does it need widened? Okay, well, let's go the roundabout. There's another one of my pet peeves. How much are we going to spend on that to solve a problem that probably doesn't exist? I hope you guys are driving around the city and going down streets like El Lago, Palisades, Fountain Hills Boulevard, and see the chunks of asphalt coming out of the road that has to periodically be replaced, and why we're looking at spending this kind of money when we should be looking at resurfacing the roads. I know, Mr. Magazine, about six weeks ago, you asked about the capital projects list and the prioritized. Did you ever get anything like that? Because I'm afraid, these would be the top two, these two projects would be the top two on the capital needs of this town. I don't know what to say. You couldn't pass, I'm telling you, you couldn't pass a property tax bill because of the way we spend our money here. People look at it and just cringe at some of the projects we take on.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
Yes, Michelle Webb.
Okay.
Hi. Good eve- good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Michelle Webb and an avid watchdog and a concerned citizen of Fountain Hills. And I think you just heard from Steve Messel that we are concerned about something like this. And I get it. I understand. I've asked, I've heard about this prior to this and said, "Why would we be spending money to widen Shea when we have so many interior roads that need help?" And my response has been from people that if it's a bond from the government, and if we don't use it, we lose it. But my question to you is, is that so bad? Do we want to waste taxpayers' money just to have to use something? One of the things that come to mind is, we tear up that road and then we actually have traffic trouble. We make a, you know, it's going to just be a cluster. And we also create more speeding on that road. That road already is too fast. We've had numerous accidents on Shea. And so, I just, again, ask you all, you know, just because you can doesn't mean that you should. So, I think that's something just to take into effect. Just because we have the money doesn't mean we spend it there. Let's go to the government and ask us to help bond us for the things that we really do need for this town, and we do need a lot. Thank you again for your time and all your efforts up there. I do appreciate it, really.
Thank you. Just want to note that that is an agenda item, so we'll be discussing it and you'll be able to get more details on that and we'll be able to discuss it further. Erin, could you help me? Because I forgot to do something at the beginning with the activities, which was to talk about out-of-state voters having the ability to vote on, can I bring that up now?
Sure, yes, Mayor.
Okay, so, we've had some requests and questions about the ability to vote on items in Fountain Hills, even if you're not registered to vote here. So, Erin did some research and if you'd like to kind of broach that, that'd be great.
Sure, Mayor, members of council. I'll be brief, and this is more of a public announcement. My understanding is that at least the mayor and potentially other councilmembers have gotten questions about, on local issues or matters of local concern, or also in district elections, sanitary district elections, et cetera. What are the regulations and rules for voting if you're an out-of-state resident or an out-of-country resident? Those questions should probably be directed to the Secretary of State's office for the most part, because the state is the one that regulates that. But in general, for the councils and the public's information, you might be eligible to vote in, on those matters or in those types of elections, but you still generally have to be an Arizona-registered voter. And so, whatever qualifications are required for you to become an Arizona-registered voter, that's the, that would be the direction you need to follow with the advice of the Secretary of State's office.
Thank you. And I know that some people can vote on, like, water districts or even, was it pest control districts, things that we haven't heard of, but even those, the person needs to live in the state of Arizona, so.
Correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks so much for that. Sorry, I forgot about it. Do we have any other speaker cards? No? Okay. So, now we'll go to our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
So, move.
Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks very much. Now, we're getting to our regular agenda. The first item is regarding commercial zoning districts allowing indoor vehicle sales and rentals. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the item before you has been considered in Planning and Zoning Commission. And Mr. Wesley, the Development Services Director, will be giving you a report on this item. Mr. Wesley?
Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me. Mayor, council, good evening. A few months ago, we received a request from a citizen that we consider amendment to our zoning ordinance, stated to allow vehicle sales in our C1 zoning district. Excuse me. Currently, vehicle sales are allowed by right in the C3 district and with approval of a special use permit in the C2 district and not allowed at all in the C1 district. I did a little research on some of the surrounding communities and found that's pretty typical. C1 zoning being pretty much a neighborhood-oriented commercial district typically does have the lower level uses and things that typically aren't outdoors, that type of thing happening in the C1. So, that was, again, consistent with, with other zoning districts. In discussing it with the applicant in this case about what might make C1, make auto sales appropriate in a C1 district, we came up with a list of things that, that could be used. And as it's being recommended to you tonight, from staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission in the draft ordinance, there are a number of items that we considered. One is that all display sales activity would take place indoors. When those activities are taken indoors, it's therefore not that much different than other commercial uses that can happen already in a C1 district. That there not be any maintenance washing type activities, that things usually drive the noise and some of the odors and things that might happen with car sales, that those not be allowed in this particular situation. We also established a maximum area, 5,000 square feet for the display, to keep the number of vehicles down, again, limiting some of the noise and the activity to keep it more consistent with the C1-type uses. And also, that is recommended by the P&amp;Z, that the, currently in C1, businesses have to close by 11:00 PM. They recommend that we have them close by 9:00. This particular use, again, to cut down on the impact on residential. And also included that, that there be no overnight parking associated with the use. So, with those particular stipulations, again, P&amp;Z Commission has recommended approval of this amendment to the zoning ordinance. Again, we do have an applicant who has a specific business in mind down off of Monterey and Shea with the VFW consignment, but if this text amendment is approved, it will apply to all C1 property in the town, not just that specific location. Anybody with C1 property could then implement this use with those conditions.
Okay. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do have one. Carl, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Brochick, maybe?
Hello, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Carl Krauzik, and I'm representing the veteran of foreign wars post 7507, which happens to own the building right behind the proposed Auto Center. First off, I'd like to make it clear that we have no objections as to the use of the building for auto sales. What I'm here to talk about is the proposed messages that are being sent out regarding ownership of this center. The VFW has no interest in ownership of that VFW center. We have an agreement with National VFW that they're able to use our Cross of Malta, and the only reason they're able to do that is because they're going to be donating a percentage of their profits towards the VFW. So, there is no ownership involved with the VFW. Matter of fact, the speaker before myself mentioned VFW Auto Center. That is incorrect. It's entitled the Veterans Auto Center. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion on this item? Mike?
A quick question for John. So, with these restrictions itemized here, 9 o'clock, 5,000 square feet, so that's going to be in the zoning ordinance. So, if another one opens somewhere else in the C1, these apply as well, right?
Mayor, councilmember, that is correct.
Okay, Hart?
Thank you, Mayor. So, can you identify any other buildings in town on C1 that are over 5,000 square feet that are vacant?
Mayor, councilmember, I haven't done research on that. They would typically be smaller in the C1 zoning district. I don't know if they'd be any larger than that, but I haven't done that research. The amount of C1 is a little bit limited in the town. There's some on-
Is our economic development? Are you familiar with any?
If I may, councilmember, so my understanding is that you did look at the zoning map to see potentially where these might go, but you didn't look at the specifics. Is this because there was a change at the Planning and Zoning Commission that was limiting the square footage on this particular, if this was allowed use?
Right. Mayor, councilmember, city manager, we had the proposal from the beginning that to be some size limit. It was in discussions at P&amp;Z that we settled on the 5,000 square feet as kind of the appropriate size. In doing that, we did look generally at C1 properties and other kind of similar uses and what building sizes are typically were. We also looked at the number of vehicles that might go into different building sizes. That's where we settled on the 5,000 square feet.
Okay. Well, my initial thought was, why limit, why limit it to 5,000? What if you had an 8,000 square foot in a C1? What's the difference?
Mayor, councilmember, the concern is, given the nature of the C1 district and the type of activity the use might drive, the concern was, as it got larger, the amount of activity and noise associated with vehicles coming and going from that type of use might be more of an impact on the neighborhood. But that was the reason, and if the council wants to make it larger, even eliminate that particular standard, we could sure do that.
I would be in favor of eliminating it altogether. The other, the other question I had is regarding outside parking. And in this particular location, there's, there's parking throughout that whole commercial complex. That's a pretty big complex. And I would think in an automotive type of a business, you're going to have outside parking. And if you're limiting to have no overnight parking, I think that, that type of restriction is going to be, one, I don't think it's necessary, and two, the enforceability of it, who's going to do that? And then, in regards to 9 to 11 a.m., 11:00 PM, businesses in C1s right now can't be open past 9 o'clock?
Past 11:00.
Why would we then limit this one to 9:00?
Mayor, councilmember, again, the discussion at the P&amp;Z was the nature of an auto sales use and vehicles coming and going that may happen with that. Could be more-
more impactful on the adjacent neighborhood than other C1-type uses. So that was the thought behind further limiting the hours.
So did, did I misunderstand what you said, or did you just tell me that currently in C1, businesses can be open till 11:00 PM?
That is correct.
I would not restrict it to nine. Inside sales business is going to have the ability to be open if they so choose. If they're gonna have auto sales inside, I don't see that as any different than any other business that would have traffic that would come and visit their business, and we wanna encourage success of these businesses. I don't think nine to 11:00 is gonna make or break them, but you just have to give them the option to be open when they feel it's appropriate. That's all I have.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. John, did you explain why we couldn't just do this, leaving the C1 alone and using a special use permit? Did I miss that in your presentation?
Uh, Mayor, council member Brown, we did not discuss that option. The applicant who made the request, made the request to amend the C1s district in this way, that would've been another option, would be to amend the C1 to allow the use by special use permit, similar to what it is in the C2, and either have some of these other restrictions or not. But no, that wasn't my presentation before.
That's, that's item number one. I feel like that changing the entire ordinance for one business, now, I'll have to say that my office is at the end of the VFW building, which is directly behind where they're wanting to do this, and I am totally for it. I think it's a good use for that particular building, I think it's a good location for that particular business, but I, I don't know, and I'll let the council weigh in on this, but I don't know why we're going, changing the entire ordinance when we could do a special use permit for this project.
Maybe I wasn't clear, Mayor, council member, right now, the ordinance does not allow for the use at all in C1. So we'd have to amend the ordinance to allow for this application for the SUP, and then come back with that application.
I got it.
This makes it by right, and so they could just do it without coming back on another step.
And, and I will weigh in that I also agree with Art. I don't think we need to be putting any more restrictions on any business in the town of Fountain Hills. I would, I would leave it at 11:00. I would also say that they have four, I think there are four pads out in front of the building that were actually originally going to be used as patios for the offices, and they are just exactly the right size if they wanted to park a car on their property on the outside of the building. I also don't feel like that would be any great harm. And once again, I, I drive by that building 10 and 15 times a day, so I, I would be affected by it, and I don't think it would affect us at all.
Councilman?
John, how, how far away are the nearest residences?
There is residential property immediately behind this, to the east. I don't have the measurement, probably 100 feet. They back up, again, behind this.
This, if this change is made, or if this is adopted, it would apply to every C1 parcel?
That's correct.
Do we have any idea, this, you may not know the answer to this, how many C1 parcels are there out there that might be subject to this? Do we have any feel for that?
Uh, Mayor, council member, somewhat, the Frye's Plaza on West Shea is C1. There's this C1 piece along this portion of Shea here, there's a little bit on the, on the west side of Shea. There is a little bit up at Fountain Hills and Glenbrook. Those are the ones I can think of. There are a few CCs, but not including the CC in this, just the C1.
Um, I'm sorry to disagree with my colleague, Councilman Brown, but the thought that we should have no restrictions on businesses, if that's what he said, is something I vehemently oppose. I think what's being proposed is reasonable, and it would affect other properties, not just this one. If it were just this one, then we might have a different situation.
Thank you. Any other comments? The, could you explain again why it can't be a special use permit just to this particular property?
So, Mayor, right now, the ordinance does not allow vehicle sales in any form in the C1 district, and we don't have the provision in the ordinance to allow it to be approved by C, by special use permit. That would be another choice of the council, instead of doing it this way, would be to, to add it to the list of special use permit options, and then we could come back with that application and apply it just to this property, or again, anybody else who would apply at that point for the special use permit.
So the, um, the fact that this is gonna move forward with every C1 property, if we accept it with all these restrictions, except, I think I agree with you on the time part, the going to 11:00, but if we did the rest of them, could another business then apply for a special use permit? So if there was another business that had a bigger area and maybe wanted to do some of the things you guys were talking about, could they then, uh, once we pass this, apply for a special use permit to do some of those other things?
Mayor, no, not unless we amend the code to provide for the special use permit option.
So I guess I don't understand why this isn't amending the code, 'cause we're changing C1.
Mayor, it is amending the code, but it's amending the code to allow it by right with these specific standards in place, and so a person could just come in, get their permit, and go forward without coming through any other approvals. If we want to bring it back to council for some type of approval, we'd need to amend the code to handle it like we do the C2.
Oh, but so they could still do it? Sorry, I, so instead of saying special use permit, I should've just said they could apply to get a bigger area, or to park outside, or to do some of those things, if we did the same kind of action?
So, Mayor, the, the only way they could do those things would be by variance, but I'd have to talk to our attorney and see if we think that's a use variance or not, or is it a standard variance? But otherwise, if we set these standards in the code, those would be the, the maximum requirements that could happen, without, again, further amending the code, or again, the variance, again, Aaron, if you, if you wanna weigh in on where you think that'd be a use variance or not at this point, it's kind of borderline, you know?
Art?
Two, two questions. One, I'd like to have James make a few comments in regards to economic development and other C1 locations. You just indicated the Frye's Plaza is C1, so there's a large executive office suite setup over there that I could envision that if we were to change this ordinance, that, that may entice some businesses that would want to potentially come. For instance, even Tesla, for that matter, has inside sales at Fashion Square. Wouldn't it be fantastic to have a Tesla come to Fountain Hills and start to sell cars inside? So I'd like to hear from him in that regard, and other C1 zones. And the second question, specifically to this business, that is what initiated this discussion. This inside sales business being not associated with the veterans' organization, but identifying essentially that some profits go to the veterans, I'd like to speak to the applicant and make sure I understand that this is not a 501(c)(3) type of auto sales, that the town of Fountain Hills, by changing its ordinance, has zero sales tax revenues associated with the type of business that we are debating right now.
He's here, so I'm sure he can come and address that in a moment.
If it's veterans or something. So...
So, council member, I think you're right. I think particularly the C1-zone properties along Shea would be of particular interest to auto dealers, because it is our busiest arterial, so I think that there would be some viability for auto sales. I think that it would certainly be something that we could be out there recruiting and looking to, to fill with this, with the change in this ordinance.
Is the old Walgreens building, that's, I believe, 14,000 square feet on Shea, C1 or 2?
My guess is C2, right? Yeah, and I think it's probably because...
And is this use already an approved use in, in C2?
It currently takes a special use permit. As we've kind of finished this process, it's made us kind of wonder if we should go back and completely look at all of our zoning districts and how we handle auto sales. We, we took this application that came in, processed it for kind of what was making sense to them, we might wanna revisit C2.
I think, I think we're on to something very strong here, and I believe that, and I have been continuously preaching, that we need to be focused in Fountain Hills on high-dollar-ticket items that bring in the most sales tax revenues for our community. If there's a way to incorporate C1 and C2 to allow for indoor auto sales, I think that would give you something that would be very strong to go out and try to promote, the type of businesses that would bring in the revenues that we're looking to do based on the structure of our finances.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Couple of things. First, John, by right, people could go to a C1 district, do this, and they'd be open till nine, correct?
Uh, Mayor, council member, if, if it gets approved as submitted, as discussed here, it would be limited to nine. If the council decides to remove that particular item from this ordinance, it'd be 11:00.
I have a couple of problems. One of them is, we don't know, I mean, I heard you indicate some of the C1 properties, but we don't know what the universe of C1 properties is out there. So therefore, we don't know how close they are to residences. I think that's potentially a big problem. My second concern, and I voiced this before, I don't want this area to look like surprise. I don't think we need a lot of, a lot of different auto dealerships along Shea or anywhere else. We have a lot of them already. And it's one thing, Councilman Tallis talks about sales tax and how we have to maximize it. I haven't heard any discussion about the citizens. What's the impact on the citizens? What's the impact on ingress and egress along these arteries? I think what's being proposed is reasonable, and I think it's a slippery slope if we'd open this all up to C1.
Mayor, I, my questions weren't completely answered before we moved on to Councilman Magazine.
You want the applicant?
Please.
I just figured I'd let him do it.
And, and as a side note, we have tremendous vacancy in this town, and whatever we can do to establish a business-friendly environment to Fountain, Town of Fountain Hills, and have entrepreneurs move forth with investing in our community, that's what we should be as a policy doing. That's, that's what we should be doing. We have far too many vacancies in this town, and that's the least we can do to try to encourage businesses to come to Fountain Hills.
Mayor?
Hi.
Council, my name is Vladimir Bure, I'm the resident, and I'm in charge of this project. Question is?
Are you set up as a 501(c)(3), and is the sales tax revenue going to be coming to Fountain Hills on the sale of these vehicles?
Sales of the vehicles, there's gonna be tax collected.
Thank you for your business and investing in Fountain Hills.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Sharna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, one quick question, and then I have a comment. If we say, oh, we wanna do the special use permit route, I mean, how many months are we talking to go back through the process and public hearings and postings and such?
Uh, Mayor, council member, we could have this back to you in April.
Okay. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of the proposal as written. You know, if you think about the valley, I mean, there are some indoor car dealerships, I get that, but there's not a ton of them. Most of the big dealers have showrooms, and then everything's outside, so, you know, we're going from a use that's allowed in C3, which is, you know, a heavy commercial use, to it's okay in C1. So I think restrictions that we have here are appropriate. I still think it's business-friendly. I, you know, I, I don't think 11:00 is really necessary. I think 9:00 PM is more than adequate to do business in this town. I, you know, hardly anyone's up past nine anyway in this town, so, so I just don't see that as realistic, and, and I too think these are reasonable restrictions, and the fact that, you know, we haven't voiced a lot about the citizens and the impact, and so I think this mitigates that to, to a good degree.
Councilman?
As we debate this, I think it's important to recognize that the C1 districts in Frye's Plaza, for that matter, those businesses right now can already be open till 11:00. So having indoor sales is, in my opinion, not gonna adversely affect any aspect of the residents, the community, at all. It already is allowed to be open till 11:00 PM.
Uh, councilman?
Yeah, one final comment from me, and that is that the notion that we have a lot of vacant parcels, and we should do everything we can to get commercial establishments into those vacant parcels, I think is headed in the wrong direction. Because, yes, I don't think we're not being business-friendly if we turn something down. We approve a lot of applications for businesses, but I just don't think that opening Pandora's box makes a lot of sense. And as far as I'm concerned, the citizens are a hell of a lot more important than any commercial properties.
Mayor, I take exception in Councilman Magazine. The citizens are important, and that's exactly why we are charged with doing our job. And our job is to create the revenues necessary to correct the infrastructure issues, to get these roads paved accordingly. We got a $64 million, 10-year budget deficit that we're looking at. We should be doing everything we can to fill these properties with high-dollar items that we can collect, the maximum sales tax revenue. That is going to be my policy moving forward. It always has been, and I believe it always will be.
Mayor?
Councilman?
You know, I've heard this from Councilman Tallis now for a few years. Yes, we have problems. Yes, we need increased financing. Yes, we have a long list of infrastructure projects that we can't finance, and on and on and on. We have a shortage, but the idea that filling these spaces with commercial is gonna solve our financial problem is absolutely foolish. It takes approximately $40 million in sales to create $1 million in sales tax. And right now, if I'm not mistaken, I think we're somewhere around $23 million in sales. So we'd have to go up to $40 million in sales to get $1 million in sales tax. It makes absolutely no sense to me.
Um, is there any other discussion? So the motion would be with all the restrictions. If somebody wants to make a motion with the restriction, with, you know, as written, and then make amendments, that'd be fine, or however you wanna do it. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval, as written, ordinance 20-03.
Second.
Okay. Are there any amendments to that?
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment that we eliminate the restriction of 9:00 PM and to allow these businesses to be open till 11:00 PM, as the existing businesses in C1 are allowed to do. And in addition to that, the outside parking restriction for C1, I think, is unrealistic, and I believe also should be removed.
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment that takes away the, um, the restriction on the time to go till 11:00, and also takes away the restriction of the overnight parking. So, any other amendments? Yes, sir?
Just have a question, maybe the applicant? Um... I assume you were, you were at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting?
Yes, I did, I was present.
And then, do, do you agree with the, the restrictions they put on that evening?
I understand that's what the restrictions are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Do you wanna make any amendment with just the time? It's up to you. I don't know if it would work.
I need clarification, please. Art, was that vote just on the amendment?
On the amendment, the amended, yeah.
Okay.
And now, I'm asking if any, if there are any other amendments before we vote on the original motion.
Okay. Can I get the vote again, please? I'm sorry, I...
Do we do a roll call, Liz?
That would be helpful.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of the amended motion on a roll call?
The amendment, you mean?
Amended motion, the amended, the amendment.
Dennis, did I vote yes? Everyone else said no.
That's what I need.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we were to remove, is, I, is it, is it the consensus of the, those that voted no to have the time for the businesses that are associated with indoor sales, that they have to be restricted to nine, even though in C1, no other business is restricted to nine? They all can be open till 11:00? Is it the time and the parking amendment, or is it one that would be acceptable to the majority? Would the time be acceptable and not the overnight parking, or vice versa? Can we have that discussion? Can we have that discussion?
Well, if you're asking me...
There's a motion on the floor.
Well, the motion can be amended. Can we discuss that?
Yes.
The motion now, as stated, is still up for discussion, correct?
Correct. And the motion that's pending is move for approval of ordinance 20-03.
Okay. I can only speak for myself, but I'm okay with the 11 o'clock.
Okay.
But I don't know.
I'd like to try to move to allow the businesses in C-1, which we're not only referring to this particular business, but that Fry's Plaza, which already every business can be open till 11 o'clock. I don't feel it should be a restriction on this particular type of business. They should be allowed to be open the same till 11:00 PM. I'd like to move that without the overnight parking amendment.
So is your amended, or additional amendment, to have it as written, with the exception of the 9:00 turning into 11:00?
Correct.
That's the amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Did you get that? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, the amended motion passed, so do we go back to the original one, right?
The amendment passed, so now we vote on the underlying amendment, which has been amended, to remove the time restriction.
Thank you. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. So that was the only change then, okay? Thank you. We haven't had a lot of those.
Mayor and council, it seemed to me that there might have been consensus, not to belabor this any further, but perhaps for John to be working on maybe a process where we can come back in the future on these types of uses with a special use permit. Would there be, because I think that would be a lot cleaner, and it'd be on a case-by-case basis in the future. So we'll, this, obviously, we'll stand and we'll handle it that way, and John will put that in his work plan to bring back in a future date. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to that, also, C-2. If this is not currently allowed use in C-2, I'd like to see the old Walgreens facility potentially be able to have indoor sales.
That's how I took it, because Mr. Wesley mentioned C-2 specifically, that there were some concerns with that as well. So we'll look at C-1 and C-2 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think when we know it doesn't have a ramification, that's, you know, for everything, it might be a little easier to make the decisions. Thank you. The next item is the cooperative purchasing agreement with Riddle Painting and Coatings for the Civic Center complex. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our facilities manager, Raymond Reese, is before you tonight with the recommendation that the council approve a contract or cooperative purchasing agreement with Riddle Painting and Coatings. We were before you, was it a couple years ago, Raymond?
Yes.
And unfortunately, that particular cooperative purchasing agreement ran out. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reese, who's going to go through and show you what is proposed as far as the buildings. The funding for this has been set aside in the facility, the capital facilities replacement fund. With that, Mr. Reese, I want you to go through your report.
Thank you, Grady, and Mayor, and councilmembers. The community center, library, and museum were scheduled to be painted as part of the reserve analysis conducted back in September of 2015. The last time the buildings were painted was in 2007, so that's about 13 years ago, and the paint has far outlasted its expectancy at the time it was applied. The cost of the proposal is $190,283, which will include the community center, library, museum buildings, all of the site walls. It will also include windows, door frames, light poles, the canopies, all the monument stands. So everything that you see out there that is either purple, pink, or blue will be changed to the new colors. And it's depicted here in the...
Mayor, can I just notify staff of something? I've been notified that the video on Channel 11 just can't be seen.
Yeah, someone just told me they couldn't hear us.
Tonight, no.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Dave, if you could just check with Mike and see what's going on.
So here's a view of the community center, north-facing. This is what it'll look like. The library, museum. Currently, on the museum portion of the building there is really deteriorating pretty quickly, so that would be the south side. You can see the grout lines on the building itself, so we really need to get the buildings to extend the life of that stucco on the building. So there's just some more views of the building. And then here, the colors...
These are simulated.
Yes, these were done by, the renderings were done by the vendor, the paint company did it for us, so this is what it'll look like.
So the recommended colors are what are on this building?
Correct. What's on here, minus any of the purple and our trim, so it'll look, it'll look uniform, so it'll look nice. So here are the colors of the building. The dark mushroom will be, I believe, the poles and the lights. That's what that will look like as well. Also in this proposal is the painting of the interior of the library. That's at a cost of $20,887, and that's going to be done in conjunction with, when we do the carpeting, so it'll all be done at once. We can close it down for a shorter period of time and work together getting that done. At the time that I did this report, and today, I still have not heard back from the Friends of the Library. They've been contacted by myself and by the Assistant Director of Administration of the Library about possibly putting in some money for the painting of the library, the interior carpeting, also the quiet room that they want to install over there, which is about $11,000 for a storefront to put in where the vending machines are. So the total for the interior of the library is about $159,000, and that's what I, the number I gave to the president of the Friends of the Library to work with, to see if they can help us out with the cost. So with that, I don't have anything more from my presentation. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? No? Okay. Councilman?
Just one question. Were these bidders, the low bidders?
This was a cooperative purchasing agreement, so this was vetted by, it's a state contract. It's through Mohabbi, so that's the schools.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in the process of getting bids to paint my home, and I've received different prices for the project based on the quality of paint. And there's, you can go the one route, and then the route that everybody recommends, because of the heat and everything, and Councilman Brown, I'm sure, can speak to this, is a paint that has elastoplasmeric in it. What kind of paint are we buying? What's the warranty for the job? Since we're spending so much money, it seems like, you know, what the money that was for the carpeting, and now for the painting and everything, are we getting the best?
Mayor, councilman, they are doing an epoxy paint on the building, so it's my understanding, when they did the bid on it, they took into consideration the deterioration of the stucco currently on the building, and that they were going to use the higher-quality paint to at least extend the life of the stucco, until we eventually are going to have to redo some of the stucco on the building.
So what is the warranty?
I don't know what the warranty is. I'd have to look at the contract. I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Councilman, do you have any expertise, advice?
So I've seen the epoxy paint that I would assume that they're going to be using. I've seen it used one time. It was not used in Arizona. It was used over in California. It's tremendously good product. The elastomeric that you're referring to is commonly used in Arizona, and has been used for 25 years, probably. I would, I would like to, if it's possible, I would like to have just a cut sheet sent out, so I could read just a little bit about this epoxy paint.
Okay.
Just so I could, I assume all the council people would like to read up on it. And I cannot compare the price of the elastomeric against an epoxy, because I haven't purchased the epoxy paint. $200,000 is a lot of money to paint these buildings, so...
Absolutely.
And they do need it. I mean, we're going to lose our stucco if we don't do something.
Correct.
And, thank you, Councilman Brown, because you bring expertise to this that I don't have. But I will tell you that every single person that has come out to the house and gave me the bedazzle, you think you were buying rustproofing and fabric protection and paint coating for your car, the way they talk, but every person did agree that if you want the best qual, if you want the best job to last the longest, elastoplasmeric in this heat and everything gives you the most bang for your buck. Since we're spending a lot of bucks, a lot of bucks, let's make sure that, like Councilman Brown says, if we're going to approve this kind of money, let's make sure that we're getting whatever's best for the environment, and, you know, whatever the best paint is going to be, so that it lasts, so that the next council that comes around and has to do this doesn't have to make a hard decision spending this much money.
Mayor, Councilman Bellage, to the best of my knowledge, when I spoke with the vendor, and we went over the condition of the building, they were putting on the building the best product for the condition that the building was in. And that's, I think that's why our cost is higher.
Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good comments from all the council members on this particular item. I think in light of this, what I'm going to do is, if the council is considering this, is that I'll withdraw this particular agenda item. We'll bring it back once we're able to follow up with the requests that we've heard tonight. One is the warranty period. We should have had that off the top of our head. I do apologize for that. And then, secondly, the cut sheet as requested by Councilmember Brown, so that this information can be vetted, and we'll bring it back. And if there's any other questions, then, as well.
Councilman Sharna?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, Raymond, so you said it includes all the different pedestals around, like the Centennial Circle and everything?
Correct.
Okay. And then, secondly, the concrete benches, can they be painted as well, or are those going to be kind of pinkish hue like they are?
I don't believe that was...
We didn't, that wasn't part of the scope, but...
We can look at that and see.
What are you doing next weekend?
Make a different state project.
Councilman?
Thank you. Grady, if I may, I'd like to see this come back before the council, sooner than later.
Okay.
The buildings are in bad need of some service.
Councilman?
Well, I certainly agree with that. With regard to the warranty, you mentioned the time, timeframe. I think it's also important to see what the definitions are. In other words, what can happen where the warranty would kick in or would not kick in? I'm hoping that that's laid out in the information you have. You're looking puzzled.
I'm taking it in. I will, I will look into all of it.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me, let me, let me clarify my comments before I get harpooned in social media, because since I voted for the carpeting, people said I don't like to read. So, which is, I don't know. Anyways, I totally am with Councilman Brown. It needs to be put on ASAP. I'm not against painting infrastructure and making sure that the buildings are taken care of. I just want to make sure that we spend the money wisely. So, don't write anything on social media. I don't like paint.
Good discussion, and we'll bring this back as soon as we can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is the purchase agreement to sell the former fire station. Grady, is that you?
Yes, Mayor and Council. So you recall that in February last year, the new fire station, too, was completed, and we took occupancy of that shortly thereafter. We, based on the direction that we received from the council, there was interest in selling the former fire station, which is off Swaro, behind Shea, on the south side of Shea. We went through a process, and we had to throw out the first set of bids for nonconformance, and then we put it back out again. I turn it over to Public Works Director, Justin Weldy, who's going to provide a brief report on this and his recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. As you all know, over multiple years, decisions have been made in the best interest of this community. We are fortunate to have been able to secure a second location for a fire station. Helps us meet our response times, benefits not only the residents, but the firefighters and first responders associated with that. As Mr. Miller indicated, we did set this out for bid. The first time we set it out for bids, we had a minimum of $600,000. That minimum was not met, so we considered that bid non-responsive. We went back out, shortened the timeframes, and allowed everyone that showed initial interest in the first process to be included in the second one. At the second one, we only received two bids, and so after doing all of the vetting and all the necessary paperwork to backtrack that, in my opinion, and I have a second opinion from our legal team here, this is the best bet for the town in regards to selling this building for what we'd ask, and for the money that we hoped to get from selling that building. But I will certainly answer any questions related to that, if you have any.
Do we have any speaker cards? Any questions about this item? No? Okay, can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Motion to approve the purchase agreement for the sale of the station in the amount of $420,200 has been made. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, just follow up to Grady. What account does this money go into?
It goes right back into the capital fund. If you recall, the fire station, we used the Subnet. We used almost all of the development impact fees, and we were shy about $600,000, so this will basically almost hold that project whole. This will go right back into the fund, which will go towards other one-time uses of capital projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome.
Next item is the redesign and painting of the mural wall. Grady?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and have our Community Services Director, Rachel Goodwin, provide you an update on this project.
Hello. Hello, we're painting. Thank you for having me. We are here, I actually have Jenny Willigrod also here, from our public art group. We are, as you might be familiar, the mural wall, also known as the pump house wall down at Fountain Park, was in a state of disrepair. It had started to peel. It had been a bit of an eyesore, and we had a number of residents and art lovers begin to let us know that it needed some TLC. So with that in mind, we have worked with the, that's not what I wanted to do. All right, let's try this. The Public Art Committee has worked with the Fountain Hill School District and the Art Club to develop a new mural. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to actually pass out this quick handout, so you can kind of see the before and afters, and then I'm going to ask Jenny to come up and explain what the process is going to be for this new proposed mural, if that works for everyone.
Thank you. Moving on.
Hi, Jenny.
New York Town Council, we're going to take a white wall and paint it pink, blue, and purple. Easter. So in the handout, you'll see that, and Rachel put this together, there's two previous mural designs. The last one, I think, was about seven years ago, which was the painted petals. And I worked with Carla Primroch and the high school kids then, and so here we are again. It did fade quite terribly, and a lot of damage, it seemed to be coming with wetness from the backside of the wall. So the town has gone ahead and power washed that and primed it, and it's ready to go. It's in good shape, so we're ready to go, too. You can see that this is our new mural proposal. In front of this pump house wall now is a butterfly garden, and the gentleman that's in charge of that lives two doors down, so we have talked about this extensively. Lisa...
How do you say your last name?
Restucia, is part of the butterfly group. So what we have done here is gone in and found Arizona butterflies and dropped them in on this mural design. So we're hoping to make it an educational piece as well as an artistic piece. So... So, um, timeline that we have is letting you all ponder this, trying to get it out to the public for about a month. Start painting March 18th. Hopefully it's gonna take us about five days. We think the cost will be about $2,500, although now I'm going to research this new paint I've been hearing about. So I don't know if that's gonna up our price. Um, we were just going to use an exterior acrylic paint, which is what the kids have used over at the high school parking lot. Dennis is shaking his head, no. Okay, so we need to do a little more research on that. But, um, basically this is the design, and I guess I'm seeking approval of the design. You'll see at the top left of the design is where it would come into contact with, over by the, um, lake. And then it wraps all the way around, so at the very end, there is a, the fountain is 50 Celebration, a little notation on that, um, just to, for our birthday that's coming up. And the butterfly right next to it is just supposed to be a photographic type experience where people can stand in front of it and put their arms out, so it was just kind of a fun added element. So, do you have any questions?
Any speaker cards? Any questions? Councilman?
As you know, this is actually what I see when I look at my back door.
Oh, good.
And, and this is the nicest of all three that I've seen to date, and I appreciate the efforts.
Well, good.
I truly do. And, um, you know, I, I, which paint are you saying you're going to use, or you're gonna use the Dunn Edwards, just exterior paint?
Um, so Carla is over at high school. And the high school kids have painted their parking spots on the ground. And she said it's really held up well, so we were just gonna go with that and they got it at ace. But I am certainly willing to research it a little bit more for fading purposes. I mean, it's gonna fade. There's just no way that these things are not gonna fade over time. The town, I believe, has agreed to put on a UV coating after we're done, which has never been done before. So that should help as well. And then, of course, if we could get that reco every two or three years when we need it, that would be helpful as well. But I'm just pulling the volunteers together, I'm not gonna paint it every other year.
Well, I sort of like the change of scenery every three, four years.
Alright Dennis, you can design it next time.
Any questions?
I love the price. Would you guys be interested in doing the whole complex?
We'll talk.
There's always one. Any other discussion? Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks very much, Jenny.
Thank you, guys.
The next item is, uh, has two parts to it, about the Shea widening and the, um, Swaro Frontage roads. Grady?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, so the item before you, um, there's actually, as the mayor indicated, two parts. So they are broken down separately with their separate suggested motions. Um, our Public Works Director, Mr. Weldy, will go through and, and give a report on both of these, um, items. Mr. Weldy?
Thank you. As stated, this is one firm with two projects. The first project is the design concept report for the Shea widening. This segment of Shea is, lies primarily between Palisades and Technology Drive. Some of it, um, on the eastbound and some of it on the westbound. As part of this, and this has a storied history, and I will most likely have to defer to Mr. Harold, the town engineer, for the long history on this and where we've come to if some of those questions come up. And I certainly appreciate him being here to answer those questions. The construction work on this will include substantial cuts and fills and also culvert extensions. Um, it will also include additional contour mapping, traffic data collection and evaluation at the Shea and Palisades and the Shea and Fountain Hills Boulevard intersection. What we will be asking this firm to do is take a look at what we have and what we will be needing in the future to accommodate the additional traffic that is predicted by mapping through the Maricopa Association of Governments and their predicted counts in the futures. That's what we will be asking them to do. Tell us what we need, where we need it, and approximately how much it will cost at that time for the first phase. If you have any questions on the first portion of this, I will be happy to answer them if I am capable or able, or if not, we will ask Mr. Harold to do so.
I can just, there's a few other pieces I'd like to kinda fill in on this. So, so this was originally part of the Proposition 400 that voters approved, the half-cent sales tax for Maricopa County. So that was back in 2004. This was identified with, um, transportation projections of traffic counts that we were gonna need to do this, um, and widen Shea to three lanes in each direction. Um, and as you are driving to Scottsdale, as you go down the hill, you see it turns into three lanes as you're going, um, westbound. We have done some widening, but we have not completed all of this. And the money that we have left that is in the account, that we have on account with the Maricopa Association of Governments, is not enough to do the full widening, however, we have enough, um, that is on the account to go ahead and do what's called the design concept report. We have this particular item on the agenda for next week at the council retreat, which has to do with the, the reauthorization of Prop 400, which is gonna be called Prop 500. Because we're not gonna have enough money to complete construction of this, but this is a very integral part, that we need to have a design concept that says how much it's gonna cost to actually do the widening, so we can get, in their call to public, I'm sorry, um, call to projects, we can get this submitted into the regional transportation program so that it could be part of the next 20 years of projects around the valley that they are considering for part of Prop 500. So I just wanted to fill that in. It's, it's a much bigger piece and while this, you know, we heard earlier tonight from residents who were opposed to widening, almost all this money that we would get would be from the half-cent sales tax paying for the widening. It would not be our, our local dollars so much on this, as it would be almost entirely paid for by, um, that half-cent sales tax that is collected, well voted on by the valley, um, residents, and our residents would be benefiting from this. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Charlo?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know if it's for Grady or Justin, but, um, so once, if we do this, uh, design concept report, then the next step sometime in the future would be engineering and design?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, that would be correct. In the future, after we know what we have, then we would then go for design and ask for a design assistance for that, which is included in, um, the MAG funding that's available and also the construction funding, or at least 70% of the structure, construction cost for that portion.
Couple things. And, uh, yeah, I know it's out of our jurisdiction, but, I mean, Shea's three lanes probably to almost Tatum? I'm guessing, right? And then it's three lanes from Technology toward the B-line, right? We did that widening?
Correct.
What, uh, what drives widening? What, what causes cities and counties and states to widen streets and boulevards?
In this particular case, it's the anticipated, um, traffic counts in the future, 15, 20, 30 years. Historically, some governments have been a little bit behind in doing the widening. And in this case, the town, thanks to good planning, has been proactive in widening the areas where it was identified much earlier in the process that that needed to be done at those locations. These two segments are actually the last section of a long-planned widening for Shea in anticipation of increased traffic in the future. But the short answer is increased traffic patterns.
And, and congestion.
And congestion management, yes.
So wouldn't it be fair to say that the existing three-lane stretches of Shea all the way into Phoenix are, have been driven and are required now basically because of existing traffic? Not even to mention future mapping?
I'm not sure that I would be able to answer that, but most likely it is a result of the future projections and also their, uh, fun, their funding and planning for those areas, because the, the traffic counts are considerably larger in those areas than we currently have in our segment. And we, we have a pretty large count as well.
If I may, to, uh, councilmembers, so originally, um, throughout the, the Phoenix area, you know, we're on a grid system and these major east-west corridors are considered roads of regional significance. And so, and that's the, what the county classifies those. And they were actually designed and, and built prior to the freeways coming in. And when the freeways came in, you know, people thought we didn't really need to have these three lanes. Well, what's happened now is the, the freeways have created a lot of congestion. You notice that with the 101. And so, um, these roads of regional significance, and I would call like Bell Road, um, Shea, Cactus, even though some of them don't run all the way through, you've got mountains and such in the way, they actually help move traffic, in some cases, better than what the freeway system can during certain peak times. So it's all part of our overall solution. Um, when I say our, I mean like the, um, the regional solution on trying to address traffic congestion and air quality. Those are all, uh, factors that, um, the Maricopa Association of Government takes into consideration. And they're also able to get federal funding for some of those, um, grants that actually come into the, into the valley for, um, congestion and, uh, um, traffic mitigation.
Well, and I know there's, we have the data and I'm not asking for specifics, but I'm sure, I mean, it seems these days, there's a lot more people coming up the B-line and, and using Shea than to get into Scottsdale and the Northeast Valley or try to get to the 101. You know, summertime, everyone's going up north and, and if they're going to Payson or the Rim, I mean, they're on Shea Boulevard. So to me, I, I just don't see how this can't be widened sometime in the future. This isn't gonna happen next year. I, I just think it's shortsighted to even not consider this. And, uh, quickly then, Justin, too, could you address kinda some of the efforts you've done over the years with bringing in filled dirt and trying to reduce the cost of this widening in the future?
Uh, councilmember, over the last 10 or so years, um, there has been an abundance of quality material locally that was removed either for home construction or other types of construction projects. Through the permitting process, through engineering, we allowed for that fill to be placed, watered and compacted in huge areas of this to reduce the future cost of the widening in which we would not have to import hundreds of tons of material. Keep in mind that while we have been doing that, we've also considered the, uh, slope cutting that will be necessary there. So we have allowed for additional depth there to add the material that we will have as part of this widening. There were some numbers rattled around in the, in some years ago, that I'm not sure whether or not they were factual. But I will certainly state that as a result of receiving this material and charging each one of these contractors $50 for each permit that they secured, that the cost for widening Shea in several locations has been substantially reduced. Substantially reduced. I don't have that number, but it's a pretty big number.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Vice Mayor.
No. Excuse me, I'm not sure who this question should be directed to, but is this, I'm just trying to understand what you said, um, Grady. So this is a pay now to apply later, right? So we're gonna pay for this, I guess, study to submit it to the authorities so we can be considered for money if we need it later to widen. Is that accurate?
Yeah, let me just kind of explain this, 'cause perhaps it didn't come across too well and I apologize for that. So, we had money originally budgeted to do the full widening, okay? And that was, um, that was over, it was almost 20 years ago, okay? At the time, we did our best to, to estimate what that would be. Nowadays, we couldn't do what we did back then to estimate. We had an engineer's estimate. Randy was our town engineer at the time, um, and he did his best to do his, um, town engineer's estimate. Nowadays, they really require you to have design concepts that have a lot more engineering that go into analyzing what the impacts and costs will be. We have money left over from 400 that was intended for this project to do the widening. So we're intending to use that money and hopefully do a, a very small segment of what we might have left over, if we have any left over. And then, um, any uncompleted, we're gonna submit along to the Maricopa Association of Governments they have right now, a call for projects that are due at the end of next month. Unfortunately, this design concept report will not come back in time for that, but this is gonna be almost probably a six-month project of receiving, um, the call for projects from the, the region. And then they're gonna be doing an analysis, and once we get this information, we'll forward it on to the MAG staff. So they'll have better numbers associate with finishing up and finalizing this widening. I hope that answered your question a little bit.
It did. I just had one more question. So, um, you mentioned that in this study, they would work with MAG and look at their predictions. Do you know how far out that prediction is, what, to what year? I mean-
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, I do not have that information. Um, Mr. Harold, do you have that information by chance, sir?
My, my understanding is they do modeling for, they do modeling, uh, traffic modeling for like a, a 20-year horizon, but I'll let that be answered by the town engineer.
Mayor, Councilman, um, MAG currently has 2035 and 2040 projections on, but I anticipate it'll be very soon. They'll have a 2045 projection, and they keep rolling it out in five-year increments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. When you say a 45 projection, projection of what?
Uh, the, uh, daily traffic, uh, projection for the year 2045, 2040.
So obviously it's incremental up to that point, and then 2045, they indicate what they think it will be.
That's correct, Councilman.
I have a question too. So this was previously an approved project in Prop 400, right? That's why we have any money left over?
Yes, that is correct.
So the, uh, to the Vice Mayor's point, it's already been an approved project in the same atmosphere that we, we would be placing it again, or we would be putting it in with the projects, and it does have regional significance. The other part of that is, um, I know Grady was saying that, you know, we did what we could, but every project, you know, I probably don't remember the, um, whether it's a three-quarters or a half, but every project that was in the original Prop 400 has, was only about half-funded by the time, you know, it went over the 20 years. So now, um, and we will have, um, somebody from MAG coming to speak with us at our next meeting about-
Right.
Prop 500, to let us know, you know, what they're doing and also how they do that modeling, what they expect. And the big challenge, which is so many Prop 400 projects, that they never, they never had enough funding. So we're already starting to ask for the renewal behind the eight ball.
And if I may-
It wasn't only just the fact that it was 20 years ago, it was that, all, region-wide, not, um, everything came up short.
If, if I may, what, a big driver on, on some of the issues, the revenue never really was realized with the half-cent sales tax. So we had a, a major downturn in the economy, and so with, um, sales tax being elastic with consumer spending, it just didn't generate what was projected at the time that, um, so we had a number of projects kinda slip. And then, over time, with the hot construction market we've had for the last five or six years, a lot of these projects, um, have escalated as we've seen as well. So you've had, you know, on one hand, revenues never were realized, and on the other hand, costs, while if you were able to construct them at the time and you had your money at the time, you were able to get really good competitive pricing. But now, you know, you've got, they're, they're still saying, I, I'm trying to remember what the, um, half-cent sales tax is short, but it's still like a, I think I read, it was like a $10 billion number, that still has not been realized, even with this good economy we've had the last few years. So if you just think about $10 billion worth of projects that just have been able, you know, not be taken under, or undertaken, I mean. It's just, that's just kinda the nature of it. In fact, they're, they're wondering if even a half-cent sales tax is the right-
Right.
-amount. They think that it might be too low, and then a number of cities are saying, look, especially with freeways, you're seeing this with freeways and bridges and things that they might've put in after 20 years, now they're needing major, uh, maintenance costs. And so now they're thinking maybe they need to build in maintenance as a portion of this. So it's, it's a, it's a challenge, and MAG is trying to get through this. This summer is really gonna be critical, 'cause the, the staff at MAG is gonna try to crunch all the numbers. And then they're gonna try to go through a prioritization process to see, um, what is going to, um, uh, get through. And I will tell you, there's a number of cities that are just like us that we're not able to get some of their major projects, um, either funded or started yet, so.
Councilman Charlo asked first, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, quickly, um, so the $115,000 that were being asked to approve here for the design concept report, can you explain a little bit more of the 70%? Is that money we already have or we will get back, or how does that work?
It is funding that we will request reimbursement for. So we have it in our budget for CIP as it- for CIP. As it's spent, we will ask for reimbursement for the amount that we have spent.
Up to 70%?
Correct, up to 70% of the cost.
Councilman?
Art?
Well, Mayor, I was just going to suggest that because of the fact we're having our retreat next week, and this is an item that the town manager indicated was going to be discussed, that we should maybe just table this, so we have more of an opportunity to talk about this next week.
Actually, this is, this is really critical, because this is actually, when we submit for the call to projects, we're going to be able to demonstrate in our application that the council's approved this design concept report, and that we're serious about this project and trying to complete it. Next week, what we're really talking about is the continuation of this for the next funding authorization for Prop 500. That will be, and then we also had another project. We were also talking about Fountain Hills Boulevard widening, which is the, not the shoulder widening per se, but the actual widening, if and when the development of the state trust land happens. And that's, could very well happen in the next 20 years, in that horizon. So I would recommend the council, rather than postponing action on this, consider taking action on this, because what we're really talking about next week on the agenda at the council retreat is really Prop 500 and how that whole process is going to work. And then we're also going to have on March 3rd, the transportation program planning manager will be speaking before the council.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Grady, can this Prop 400 money be used for anything besides something we've applied for?
It can only be used specifically for the approved project.
And, and this is an approved project, it just wasn't completed. So, and do we lose it if we don't use it?
Yes, and I, and I would tell you that if we don't do our best to try to spend down this money by 2025, then our, probably our chances of ever getting funding out of 500 will go away, because they're going to, they're going to say we didn't really make the effort to try to do something about it.
Thank you, Grady.
Yes, Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Sharnow, Councilman Tollis, and myself, this weekend spoke at the Republican Club Breakfast, and this particular item, I guess I learned this weekend that "Are You Insane?" has taken the place of "Good Morning," because so many people came up to me and asked me if I was insane over this project. I think we need to tell the residents that our hands are tied. I think it's important that we get this message out, that our hands are tied as it relates to, we cannot take this money, if I'm getting this correct, we cannot take this money and use it on other parts of our interior streets and things like that. So, because we're committed to this from a previous decision, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think it's imperative that the message, like we've talked before, all council members have talked, that our messaging sometimes is not really good, and people read into things and make accusations that aren't exactly true. So since so many people were fired up over this, I would imagine it was after the agenda was released, and then, I don't know if you guys got it, but Saturday morning, I mean, usually my wife is the only one that says, "Are you insane?" So, but other people thought that today, or I mean, Saturday. So it's imperative that we say that because we're approving this, we're approving it so we don't lose it. That's number one. If we don't act on it, we're going to lose it. And that it's impossible for any of this money, even if it is $157,000, could not be funneled to any other street other than this particular project, correct?
Correct.
All right. Council, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Spillage. I think that's well stated. And I think the other message that you just said, Grady, was if we don't do this, we are not going to be taken as seriously for future requests under the Prop 500, I think is what you're calling it, or whatever you're calling it. So I think that's an important message, too, that we want to position ourselves for the future to do the best we can do for the town.
Absolutely. And I'll give you an example, and while they're not really related, the town has been very successful of late with receiving grants from Maricopa Association of Governments for our pedestrian safety. We have a really big project that we are, we just got awarded for doing, it's a design study that will, hopefully will get money in the future for actually constructing sidewalks for the entire town, and finish up and do infill in all the critical areas of town. Those all flow to what you would call our technical committees, and this is, this right here will go to a technical committee. So it all kind of, our reputation all, you know, is on the line, because we've been very successful on that. And I think if we're going to be taken seriously, one of the other interior streets that people talk about all the time is Fountain Hills Boulevard. And that's another one, that's an interior street I heard earlier, people mentioning by name. And that's one that we plan to talk about next week at the retreat, that we plan to submit as part of the call to projects for Prop 500. So very good, very good points. And the messaging, I'm getting that loud and clear, and we'll do everything we can to get the information out, both through our public information. I think we'll also try to put this in our community newsletter that goes out, so people will have an idea of what we're talking about. So they have a better idea of what this project's all about.
And the last part of that, too, is rather than just if we don't use it, we lose it, to make the point that was brought up, there is no reason to think that the MAG modeling that recommended this in the first place has changed. In fact, Maricopa County, as we all know, is going on its third year in a row of the highest growth in the entire country. So there's, the modeling is still there, the need is still there, even if you don't see it every day driving to Target, and it's still a good project. And this is the first step to that. So it's, so yes, use it or lose it, but also not just for nothing, for the future need that is, that MAG and the region and we have determined is worthwhile. So is there anything else? Any other, anybody? Oh, were there any speaker cards? Okay. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve professional service agreements PSA 2020-063 with Kimberly Horn for $157,453 for the design concept report as presented.
Actually, if I can correct you, this is actually two parts. So if you read down below where it says "Suggested Motion," it's number one, is what you'd want to do.
I just read number one, did I not?
Oh, I saw it.
You read above as well?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just read down to the bottom, it's really for $115,778.
Design concept report for Shea Boulevard widening from Technology Drive to Palisades Boulevard for $115,778 using 70% MAG RTP reimbursement funding and a...
Nothing.
Just saying, and, and right there.
Let's just do that one.
I'll second that, but not the "and a."
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you so much. Now we get to the "and a."
Yes, as I mentioned, this was a two-parter. And so I do apologize, the way it was presented, it seemed like it was confusing. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Weldy. You recall sometime last year, the council provided some direction for staff to go work with the business owners and tenants who are located off of the frontage road on Saguaro. That has occurred. This basically would bring in an engineer to do a design charrette with the business owners and tenants to find a design that would be suitable and amenable to everybody. And we're recommending that we do this on the front end, and go through that and get buy-in before we get too far along with this project. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Weldy, who has probably additional information to add.
Thank you. As Mr. Miller indicated, we, based on some direction from the mayor and council, we put together a small group, and we met with the stakeholders and the stakeholders' tenants at a meeting. We got a consensus that there was an interest from the majority in moving forward with this project. And so what we're asking for tonight is for the council to approve the second portion of the item on this firm's list. And that will provide for a concept design for the elimination of the Service Road on Saguaro from Panorama North to Colony. And there are numerous options that, as the stakeholders and the town and the mayor and council will be involved in with this design charrette that we anticipate coming forward. We believe that this will not only provide an increased benefit for the business owners, but it'll also add additional safety measures for the traffic on Saguaro, and minimize some of the challenges that we face on the Service Road as part of this elimination. Keep in mind, this will also be the boilerplate that we would possibly consider using should we move forward with the abandonment of the next segment of that, which is south from Panorama to Desert Vista. Again, just a boilerplate, not a decision, but certainly something that we can discuss. If you have any questions related to this, I will certainly answer them to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Any questions? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. So if we, if we go ahead with this, are you saying then that the other segment from Panorama to Desert Vista, we wouldn't need to do this, because it would just basically piggyback on what is agreed on in the other segment?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, no, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that we could use it as a boilerplate. So if it, if it works in this particular instance, and we have the stakeholder involvement and approval, we could use that approach as a boilerplate to any future discussion in regards to abandonment, again, if it works. If it also doesn't work, then we will have that boilerplate for lessons learned for the project.
So I think what he, boilerplate, when I think of boilerplate, I kind of think it's a, you know, you have something designed, and you're going to kind of make it work over here. I think, to his point, I think we're talking about the approach. So the citizen involvement, the business involvement, we would kind of model that approach if this were to go forward, and the business owners are interested in this, if that, if that answers your question.
So potentially, we could spend 41, or we're not sure how much on the other segment, if, just to get to this point, on the other segment?
Yes. Potentially, it could cost that much, but we don't have that estimate. I just use it as an example. This is just the beginning for a longer segment, but we're just working on this segment first. And thank you for the clarification, Mr. Miller, on that.
Do you recall, we had a discussion a couple weeks ago about, you know, a potential study by Safeway for a possible pedestrian crossing there of some type? Do you remember what kind of amount we were talking about for that? Was it like $10,000, or was it...
I distinctly recall the conversation, Councilmember, but I do not remember the contract amount.
I mean, I just remember, I just, $10,000. I just remember a lot of negative discussion about, you know, yet another study, and throwing money down the drain, and that kind of thing. And with this, I just think we kind of have the cart before the horse. I mean, I know you guys met with the tenants and the property owners, but the idea is to get an improvement district forum, which would require the adjacent property owners to agree to that. And I personally would like to see that type of agreement, or the district forum first. Then the district could fund the $41,000 and say, "Yeah, well, we like option number three, let's go with that." I mean, to me, this is spending 41 for something we don't even know is going to be done.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to refresh everyone's memory as to, the history of this project started back in 2005, '06-ish, and this was an initiative that Frank Ferrara, the board of the Chamber of Commerce, and the town worked together. Town manager Tim Pickering was involved in this as well. And the idea was that this would be a dramatic improvement to that area, which I believe it would be. However, I do agree with Councilman Sharnow that we have to do a better job right now. I was at the meeting, as you know, and I have some serious reservations and concerns about a few of the owners down there that are involved in these discussions. And if we were to work with the existing plan we have, that was done back 15 years ago, roughly, and to work with the concerns that a number of these owners currently have, particularly the ingress egress of their properties, the one major owner that has the big strip mall where the Fountain Hills Water and Ice, he seemed to be one of the most concerned in regards to the access of his facility. So I just feel before we go forward with the $41,000 essentially design concept that may never go anywhere, that we try to get these owners back together and have a much better effort to do that. We didn't have as many of the owners in that room, and the tenants in that room, that I think we need to. I don't think there was a consensus, I don't think that there was, I think they're all, okay, yeah, we'll look at something else. But looking at something else and spending taxpayer money of $41,000 right now, I don't see this as coming to fruition that fast. So I think we need to do a better job of using the plan we have now, getting the owners back together, trying our best to really work out in our own way some drawings, and getting those ingress egress to those properties, and get them to all sign off on, here's what we would agree to, and what are their costs going to be associated with the abandonment of that property? How is that property going to be incorporated into theirs? There's a lot of details that I think that we need much more consensus on these owners before we go spend $42,000.
Thank you. Any other items? I wanted to ask, and you probably might not know this, John or Grady, but to Art's credit, this was on the, you said 2004, but it was on the 2010 general plan. I mean, it's literally spelled out, town should examine the viability and safety of the frontage roads, investigate how to mitigate traffic conflict, conflicts, reduce visibility, hazardous intersections, et cetera. The elimination of the frontage roads and the provision of direct shared driveway access should be considered. So this was part of the Vision Goals and Objectives 1.2. And I told Grady I didn't have a chance to see if it was on our general plan for this time, but if it isn't, and if it's something that we think is still something we should look at, but we just don't, not, not right now, and I agree with you, to try to get more agreement from the owners. But this doesn't mean it's kind of lost forever. If we still agree that it's a pretty, you know, the sidewalks, everything is actually a good goal, but, you know, not now.
And I'm, and I think the plan that we have right now is a fantastic plan, and you have the driving, the walking paths, I mean, it is a really nice plan, but we've got to get the owners to really come on board much more committed than they are right now. I think we're going to be running into some challenges if we don't, even if we did a nice design concept. But that's my thoughts.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
More than okay.
I had a feeling. Okay, so we'll just, you know, for future reference, right?
But direction to staff, I really feel we do need to try to get these owners some way, shape, or form back in, back together with the previous plan. Do it at the community center, do it here, somehow, some way to get them more engaged, and maybe, maybe work with a commercial real estate agent that would be incorporated into this project to help them to understand. There's a lot of numbers that need to be crunched, and if we have the staff internal to do some of this legwork, we should, we should continue down that path.
Yeah, we hear you loud and clear. What we were trying to do is basically, it's very difficult and challenging, because you have, each of these individual property owners have their own perspectives on things. And just one that has car sales up on the one end, really didn't want to have a sidewalk in front of his, his business. You had others that didn't like having a shared driveway. And it just, we were hoping with this public involvement, and having a firm help us kind of get input from each of the property owners, and try to find a design that can make everybody happy. I'm concerned, because I'm thinking we're trying to shoehorn everybody into a design, make some tweaks to it, and in the end, we don't get anybody to agree on anything. And I'm really afraid that we're trying to go down a different path. I totally hear the council, I understand as far as the cost, and I'm not willing to die on the sword for that, but we'll do our best to try to work with the resident, the owners there, and see what we can. But I'm not hopeful based on just the meeting that we had. But I will do our, we'll do our best to try to get everybody together and try to work on this. But I will do our, we'll do our best to try to get everybody together and try to work on this.
And again, if you feel like it's worthy, to make sure it's in the new general plan.
Okay, good point.
Well, and I think, you know, someone who has property down there kind of needs to be the champion of this and rally the troops, so to speak. I don't think staff should, you know, spend an inordinate amount of time on this. It needs to come, you know, from within.
Yeah, and I just wanted to just make one last comment, and that has to do with the improvement district. And if this were to be something that would be considered for an improvement district, you really need to have an improvement district scope figured out. You need to let your individual property owners know what their portion's going to be, what their assessments are going to be. That's what part of this was going to do, is if they can get an agreed-upon design, then they were going to go ahead and probably on a cost per square foot, you know, and benefit, they were going to come up with a cost. So maybe we have to do some more preliminary work. Maybe that will help reduce the cost for this type of contract, and we'll be back. So we'll come back to you guys and give you a report after we initiate this. So I think we got our direction loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I'd be happy to withdraw this from the council's consideration.
Thank you so much. Thanks for all your work. With the last item, I'm actually going to ask for some permission for us to take a stand on a couple of bills. So the first one is the candidate sign one that we talked about, House Bill 2028. It was amended now that is even longer time that signs can be out, which would be posted in the right of way 188 days prior to the general election. Political signs could politically be in the right of way for six months, starting late April through the November election date. The League opposed it. And then, of course, with the whole Reed versus the town of Gilbert, where you can't really regulate signs on content, we're opening up, they're opening up that a lot of signs of any kind could be in our right of way. So if you're okay, since this is, the League is opposed, if you would like to take a formal position against this, then Grady will do what he usually does, which you can explain because it was, it passed a committee already, so, yes.
Does this also mean that if it passes, that anybody can put signs in the right of way for six months?
That's the fear.
This is nuts.
Because with political signs, it's always had a kind of a special, you know, you allowed that, you know, HOAs allowed it and stuff like that. But now with that Supreme Court ruling, it's starting to get like you can't really regulate content.
I think, was that a motion, Alan?
Yes, it was.
Well, I think Art had something to say.
It's nuts, yes.
Art, you had something?
Not on this particular bill, but I do have, I do have something different.
Does anybody want to second that we would take a position opposed to this sign, these signs? Second? All those in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Yes, Art?
So this is in regards to any other related action proposed pending before state's legislature or potentially pending before state's legislature. SB 1625, I don't know if those of you have been following, but SB 1625 is an initiative to ban certain firearms. And I think it's an attack on our Second Amendment rights. Many communities around Arizona and throughout the country have addressed these initiatives by legislatures to try to stop them from having their Second Amendment rights. And I've spoken to many constituents in this town, they're very concerned. And I'd like to see this council move forward with a Second Amendment sanctuary, some sort of resolution that we will put forth to the council for a vote and make it very clear that we are not going to adhere to any legislation that's going to affect our Second Amendment rights in Fountain Hills, Arizona.
Second.
Well, that's not a motion. It's not, well, I don't know, you said you'd like us to get the information about the bill. None of us have that bill in front of us.
That's, excuse me, my position, mayor and council, to the extent you're interested, would be that if you're interested in seeing a resolution, if you're interested in seeing a resolution brought forward for discussion for the council, I'm fine with that, if that's what the motion is for.
And we'll bring the information on that bill at that time.
Okay, yeah, that one's not on there. One that is of interest but not asking to take a stand yet is HB 2705, which would, oh, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. This one is 2841, which would be that by 2025, every city or town would have to set aside 30% of vacant land for an overlay affordable housing district. So you could have no open space requirements, zoning, design, anything like that. We would basically have to, it's very broad. We also discussed how we have a general plan that has open space in certain areas, and this would just preempt any decision-making. I think the understanding was that this won't progress, but they were going to have it in a committee today, and I don't know what happened. But hopefully, it's just not going to pass, so, yes.
Do they define affordable housing?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't write out the whole bill, but, yeah, it's a significant preemption on the ability of cities and towns to...
And it was affordable, single-family housing.
Single-family, right. So it wouldn't matter what zoning was there if you had a vacant property. So I should have tried, I didn't have time to look up whether it passed the committee. But if it did, then we'd have to take a look at that. One of the things that we are in favor of is this HB 2705, vacant abandoned buildings, ordinances. I individually registered my support, we can do that if you want, but it allows cities and towns to adopt ordinances used in many other committees across the nation to address neglected buildings. One of the things I thought was kind of interesting, because we don't have like a lot of abandoned, neglected kind of stuff like that, but it also includes requirements so that code enforcement and police can contact the owners. And it includes maintenance requirements to ensure that buildings are secure and stabilized for future occupancy. And I don't know enough about the details of the condition of some of the buildings, but this is actual League proposal that was brought forward. So if you want at some point to take a formal vote to be in favor of it, we could do that. It would address some of the things that people are talking about here in town. And then there's another one about vaping and trying to preempt cities from being able to make any rules about that. So we can revisit those things to see if they're starting to progress any further. But, and if anybody has any other issues from the legislature that they wanted to bring up or have us vote on. No? Okay, well, thank you. Anybody have anything that they need for the good of the order to tell Grady, or a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn. Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.